Good evening. It's my pleasure to call the Thursday, August 4th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now will Ms. Martha Q., our Board Secretary, call a roll.
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass? Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here. And Ms. Snodgrass is away on vacation, and I realize I forgot our mission and goals, so we'll return to that. Thank you.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing; Excellence in education is a shared responsibility and partnership with all district and community members; Whole child development is vital to our educational system; Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical and career, and social-emotional learning. Our decision-making process is student-centered, and student voice is valued.
The 2020 to 2025 district goals are: Social/Emotional Wellness: To produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish; To prepare contemporary citizens; To modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society; And Diversity and Inclusion: Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. Next item is the minutes. I will accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the July 14th, 2022 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Feinberg moved.
Larson, second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We still don't yet have student reports. We'll look forward to having those when the school year resumes. And then tonight, you may have noticed that we have our Assistant Superintendent Jen Saxa here to give the superintendent report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wedeman. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. I have two items in the superintendent's report. And for the first, I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Arthur Schuba. If you'd like to head on up, I'm going to introduce Mr. Schuba. Also known as Art Schuba, is a 1968 Haverford graduate and a member of the 1968 Central League Championship Baseball Team. He went on to have an outstanding teaching and coaching career in Kentucky. He has taken upon himself to research and document the achievements of Haverford Athletics, starting from 1914. He is presently serving as a committee member of the Haverford High Sports Hall of Fame as their historian, which I am sure believe is the appropriate spot for him. As Mr. Schuba described in an earlier communication that he sent to us, the last time he was here, he presented Dr. Rucci with a three-volume set of his research project. It's called "A Century of Haverford High School Athletics." Since then, it has grown to a five-volume set for 1,318 pages, full of color pictures, athletic stories, both team and individuals, statistics, team stories, and educational backgrounds of athletes. Each year, he updates the volumes, and new copies are distributed to the superintendent's office, the principal's office, the Haverford High School Athletic Director's office, as well as the Haverford Township Historical Society. I believe he also gives portions of those books to our graduating seniors as they go along as well. So we are very happy this evening to welcome Mr. Schuba again to the board meeting, and look forward to hearing a brief presentation of this very prolific work.
Well, thank you. First of all, there's been a Schuba in this school since 1937, or a descendant, and the last one graduated in 2015. Oh, I got the microphone over here. I didn't get that in front of me. Sorry. Anyway, the same year that last one graduated, my father also passed away. That was the last of the family members. And Mrs. Patterson approached me about a scholarship, and I felt kind of obligated to do something like that. So after lengthy discussion, I agreed to do two scholarships, one for the male, one for the female athletes. Okay? And as long as I had money, I'm not going to take it out of my back pocket, but find it to a resource like officiating track meets, substitute teaching, that kind of thing. Okay, so now the first part of this little presentation, I want to try to move quickly. The part I want up there, Chris, is to... No, not that one. The Oakmont one. There we go. A little history here. A couple things I want to bring up here. I want you to imagine you're across the street, looking at the Oakmont Building. The front, where you go into the main area, plus four windows to the left. That's the original Oakmont Building in 1914. Actually, 1911. The first graduating class out of the building was 1914. Jimmy Dykes, a Philadelphia A's player, graduated in that class. 1917, then they added four windows, the four windows to the right. So now you've got something that looks like what the Brookline School looked like. And then in 1931, you have the wings. I call this the auditorium wing, and the wing way up there is the cafeteria wing when I was here. Okay? And at that time, somewhere up until 1929, now, don't be embarrassed if you don't know this. I didn't even know, sorry, I didn't know this. Haverford was not known as the Fords. They were known as the Warriors. And it was inappropriate to call the girls Warriors. They were called the Lassies, or the Red and Gold Gals of Haverford, or Haverford Girls Teams. Jean Shirley was an athlete who was in the Olympics in 1928, her junior year, and then graduated in '29. But anyway, throughout the newspaper articles and in the yearbooks, they were inadvertently interchangeable, using Fords and Warriors, even in the same paragraph. So eventually, it came out they were going to be called the Fords. Now, there is a letter sweater up there, as you can see. We have this on display in the high school. There is an H at the bottom of the H. On one side is a W, and the other side is a C. That stands for Warriors Club. When I was going to school, it was called the Letterman's Club. I don't know if they have anything like that today, but back then, that's the proof that there was a Warriors Club and also the articles with it. Also, being on the Hall of Fame and on the Hall of Fame Committee, I came back here and looked around, and '85, the asbestos contamination. '95, there was a flood. And 2000, the renovation for the new part of the school, a lot of things were thrown away, destroyed, whatever. And I went on a little spree with Mrs. Patterson. We went through the school. She wanted a favor done. I got rid of all the old trophies that she had stored down in the basement. And we found the Jean Shirley Girls MVP Basketball Trophy. And right away, that little spark into her, and I said, "Well, I want to update and refurbish, bring back to life the heritage of these trophies," because MVP stands for something, Most Valuable Player. When I got done the football one, I put it in the front office. The first thing Pete Donaghy did when he came in there, turned it around, looked for his son's name. The second thing was Greg comes in there. He was a time teacher and a cross coach. He sees his name on there. Other teachers walking by. I know this person. This is a spectator, or a fan, or a parent's highlight, the Cedar's son, all these things. We put them in there. I got them all finished. Found all the recipients, put them on there. It didn't cost a whole lot of money. And again, track, officiating, substitute teaching, I was giving back. It was a win-win. I was getting to officiate. I was giving back the money to Haverford. I wasn't pocketing anything. I was doing something for Haverford there. And accordingly, they also did this book. It started as a two-volume set. If you ever see the back end of a book, of these books with nothing on them, that's the two-volume set. And the three-volume set had a red backing with black lettering. So you can't go get in two of one and get third. It is everything in the two, but spread out because of all the additions to each one of the chapters. The four-volume set was a yellow background with a red lettering. And now we have... This is, some teachers call it "Haverford's rendition of War and Peace." Some people call it "A labor of love." I called it "A work of art." But anyway, I've already got the sixth, the six-volume highlight, I've already got worked out, because what happens, this four-volume set is only a two-year thing. I thought it was going to last for more than that, but over 200 pages were added to it, and I couldn't fit them all in just four volumes, so I had to go into another volume. And could Chris go to the yellow page? Here is the table of contents. The very top part, before I guess those five little columns, that's in every book. That's the history of Haverford, the facilities, education, certain things that stand out, everything, even has the Olympics in there. Then the bottom part is the Hall of Fame and the appendix for the athletes and the teams. The five things you see in the middle there, Volume One says football and baseball. Volume Two is basketball, cheerleaders, and wrestling, I believe. I can't read that far away. But each volume has specific sports in it. Eventually, what's going to happen, to give you an idea, I looked at the future. The baseball have to come out of Volume One, football will be all of Volume One. Track and field and cross-country is going to be all of Volume Four. And lacrosse, field hockey will be all of Volume Three. Maybe that's... There are some sample pages I gave you, a packet of what some of the pages look like, the color, and some of the stories. I did different things just to give you an idea. Emma Taylor's in there, Steve Jawackam, I forget some of the other things, but I put some of those in there. This was a win-win situation for me, doing something for Haverford. They were allowing me to officiate their track meets and substitute teaching. I'm getting too old to substitute teach. I'm 73. And me and education, what it was when I grew up, you know, you think about the front of the middle school, there was three steps to go up to that middle corridor. I got a week's detention for running up three steps, and I wasn't running fast. I was just going faster than a walk. But that discipline's changed a lot since then. So I'm too old-school with the discipline. But the hardest part of this book is the statistics, and that's why I'm going to dwell a bit on tonight. I don't get all the help from the coaches. I deserve to do this, because 75 years from now, we're probably all going to be dead and gone. But who's going to carry over, making sure those statistics are still intact? That's what's important here. Those statistics belong to the children. The children are the Fords, all right? They don't belong to the coach. The coach just gets the win-loss record and the accolades of just enjoying all that. But some of the coaches take those scorebooks with them, and they don't ever turn in the statistics. Next thing you know, we have some things missing. I worked with a coach on one specific athlete, and he said, "I can't find that scorebook. I've lost it." If it had turned into the school at the end of the season, it would have been there, okay? And one year, a coach told me, "We didn't keep a scorebook." Why not? Now, see, these athletes have Hall of Fame credentials, statistics, records. When I started doing this, the track and field was only a half of a page. The track and field statistics are now five pages long. Leaderboards, you know, top 10, things like that. And when you don't give in some of the statistics, we have a problem with some of the kids don't see that. When I told you about Pete Donaghy seeing his child in the back of that trophy, because that's where his son's name was, Jack, well, these children need to see their name. They... Look, this is how good it... This year, in track and field, we had people breaking records that stood for 50-some years against athletes that were all-time greats. You would never think those records would be broken, but they were broken, and on top of it, some moved up into the leaderboard. They were a tenth of a second or a hundredth of a second from being number one, and some are still coming back next year. Some of these records, some of these statistics, I can find online, like, for example, swimming, golf, track and field, cross-country, because they have a certain way of posting them. But basketball, and baseball, and things like that, some coaches don't even give them to me. I'm lucky. Something has to be done where I can continue doing this and keeping the book going. This, no other school has something like this. I wouldn't... If Upper Darby approached me and offered me 500 grand, I'd say no. Some of you think I'm stupid for that, but I don't love that school one bit. You can tell them I said so. But this is, this is what I love, Haverford. I did this for Haverford. You know, someone says it's a labor of love. Well, I kind of agree, but I love Haverford, and that's why I do it. And I'm giving something back to Haverford. I'm an educator. I'm a coach. I work full-time around the clock for the children and did everything I could. I'm from the 49th worst-paying state for teacher salaries, Kentucky. Mississippi is the worst. Texas is not far behind. Up here, I say "up here" because I'm so used to being in Kentucky, you're two times more than the salary I was getting in Kentucky. And they're poor. I'm having to help those children all the time, okay? And that's what other coaches do. You would never consider doing that up here. Your retirement for teachers up here is by far two times amount of what my retirement is from Kentucky. So whatever little I can do, and I'm used to giving back. So me officiating track meets, which I appreciate, I was able to fund the scholarship, the substitute teaching, this book, the rewards from Staples I get, this book, the trophies. I think that was, when we cleaned out their trophy cases last Thanksgiving, the athletic director called me over, and we cleaned them out, and we kept in there only the quality trophies that were supposed to be kept there, and we found a place for all those MVP trophies. Wrestling belonged in the wrestling trophy case. Baseball belonged to the baseball. Football belonged to the baseball. And you could see the names, and the children come by there. They can see their names. If they won an award, it goes to the banquet. When Trey Blair received the MVP, he gets a picture with it. He takes it home. He's got the picture. The trophy stays in the school, and his name's on there. The last thing I want to read, this is a fun thing. It's called "Did You Know?" All right? "Since 1914, 284 conference championship teams, 151 conference runner-up teams. 75 of those teams were undefeated. 61 teams were district championship teams. 13 were district runner-up teams. 21 were district Final Four teams." That's always a big thing. "17 Delco championship teams, seven runner-up Delco teams. Five Delco Final Four teams. 23 PIAA state championship teams. 14 PIAA state runner-up teams. 142 individual conference champions. 24 individual conference runner-up athletes. 32 individual conference champions. 88 individual district champions. Six individual district runner-up athletes. 12 individual district Final Four finishers. 44 individual Delco champions. 12 individual Delco runner-up athletes. Four individual Delco Final Four finishers. 56 individual PIAA state champions. 36 individual PIAA state runner-up athletes. 48 high school All-American athletes. Eight Olympic athletes. 24 former Haverford athletes have played on an NCAA Olympic or professional championship team. Two former athletes have coached an NCAA or Olympic or professional team. Seven former Haverford athletes were individual NCAA Olympic or professional champions." I kind of like doing things. It tells you, great coaching. One other thing, if for everybody in here thinks you have it bad, or something's not quite right, I'm going to tell you right now, this school is, to me, one of the best. I'm not saying it's the best, because I don't know what the best is. But I've been to San Diego, been to Florida, been to Alabama, been northern in New York, Ohio, Kentucky, Tennessee, and there is no school in the ones I've seen that compare to this school system. So you've got it made, and I know the Board of Education over the years have done everything they can to keep things up to date and improving the facilities compared to what it was a long time ago. There's plenty of history... Whoops! ...in this book. Does anyone want to help you hold this and get these pictures? This is kind of a neat little thing here. Nobody wants to?
Yeah.
Oh, here, look at this.
Yeah.
What do you need me to do?
Well, Mr. Schuba. As you prepare for pictures, Mr. Schuba, I just want to thank you for that comprehensive overview of the work. I think it's safe to say that you are the MVP of our athletics history here. We are pleased... There you go. Can't have them out of order. There we go. Right. That's great.
Any questions you have?
You know, one thing, the one thing I found, you know, somewhat fascinating, by just reading through this quickly, I always wondered, and I never figured it out, why the mascot, the car had a hat on? Why the mascot was wearing a hat? The car had the hat on? I didn't... Oh, yeah. Well, it's in here, but go ahead.
Doctor mentioned who was the basketball coach in the early 30s, had a friend in Hollywood, and when the change to the Fords, he asked his friend in Hollywood, "Can you give us a comical-looking Ford?" Which is what it is today. And the students recommended putting the sailor's hat on the top corner of the Ford in honor of the military veterans in World War II.
1939, right, is when it was done? Yeah, that's, that's, I found that fascinating.
This book, I always think it's good to change once in a while, because that's old time. But I want you to see this. Somebody sent me a birthday card one time, and I was impressed with this colorful Ford. Why can't we change the name back to mascot? War today is, World War II is over. We still going to have war. This is good. I think this is better. It takes away from some of that. But it's something to think about. It's not my recommendation. It has to come from administrative and Board of Education and athletic people, but that's something I thought I'd put that in there, because I needed another thing for a page. Any other questions?
Not a question, but did want to just appreciate all the, you know, the research and work. Back in my high school days, I was a yearbook editor, so I like value and know how much effort goes into laying out all those pages and putting it together. But I was going to make a suggestion. I know we've heard this year about a new group that started at the high school for the sports media and the kids who are broadcasting the games and doing the journalism. I think we have one of them right back here. They are going to the games and keeping the stats and reporting on them. They may be a good resource to help you with your projects. I just wanted to make that connection and maybe get some students involved in your big project.
Yes. The season-ending statistics from the coaches, I need those, and some coaches are great, other coaches, it's like they don't care. And I'm not saying they don't care. They just don't really bother. It's not part of their job. I guess that's what they think. I'm not sure. But something has to change where I continue to get this and keep it updated, because you start to talk... What happens, I faced a couple lawsuits in this book. One person said, "Well, I belong..." I said, "Not according to what I have. You need to prove it to me. Give me an article." And they started arguing back and forth about, "I won this race, and I had the fastest time." And I'm thinking, "Well, the coaches said it was too windy." Me being a track official, I said, "Did you have a wind gauge?" They said, "No." Well, then that person should have the record. I had to come up with a solution to that problem to make sure there was no lawsuits on me. And the other one has to do with scoring in basketball, 1,000 points. That was an argument and a half. I'm not going to go into that, but it, all kinds of things you run into doing. I'm the perfect person for doing this, because I can read it right down the line and say, "Here's the perfect solution." I appreciate being here, and I hope I didn't take too much time, but I'm sorry if I did.
Thank you so much.
I hope, maybe I'll have seven volumes the next time. I don't know.
We'll look forward to that. Thank you. Well, Mrs. Battistelli now has the honor of following such a presentation. She is here this evening to give an overview of the Health and Safety Plan that is required for 2022-23 school year.
Good evening, Ms. Saxa, Ms. Wedeman, members of the board, community members, and colleagues. This evening, I'm going to present the draft of the 22-23 Health and Safety Plan. We are required, along with every other school district in the state of Pennsylvania, to have a Health and Safety Plan for the 22-23 school year. Every district in Pennsylvania has received ESSER funding, and therefore, every district in Pennsylvania is completing the Health and Safety Plan. Before I get started, I just wanted to say that, keeping with tradition of presenting a Health and Safety Plan on a Thursday at a school board meeting, this morning, CHOP released updated guidance. This afternoon, the Pennsylvania Department of Education told us that next week we will get updated guidance. So with that being said, I'm going to present the plan as is, and if anything happens between now and 10 o'clock at night tonight, I'm sure somebody else will change guidance, but we're just going to go right into it. Anna, do you have the... Oh, with the clicker. Sorry, that's on me. There's not a chance... See, I already clicked too fast. Okay. So the first, and this is not, this is all, I'm just going to skip, because this is all the language provided by the state. This is not our stuff. Okay. There we go. The first section here outlines our plan for in-person learning for the school year. Of course, students who opt to participate in Haverford Online will participate in that virtual program. That has been a program in place long before COVID and will continue to be a program. In fact, I can make that note on the document for the next meeting, if you would like, that we planned up the all-in-person. Those who choose Haverford Online can remain online. All students this year will have in-person instruction. If a student's not able to participate in in-person instruction temporarily due to COVID isolation, teachers will work with families to set up appropriate instruction for students. teachers will work with families to set up appropriate instruction for students based on the need of the students, the developmental level of the students, and agreed upon work between the parents, the students and the teachers. This could be using Canvas to have our course materials available. While students are home, students could listen in to the classroom instruction. Or simply the student might just not be able to attend school and not be able to do schoolwork because they were sick. And that's happens and they're allowed to be sick. And our teachers are there to support them when they return to school after being out for an extended period of time during, due to COVID. I also wanted to note that there is a typo in this section and I will correct that. There is a spelling error. I will correct that in the version that comes before the board next week. You've also noticed that we've added the Delaware County Health Department to the list of health agencies. We've recently received draft guidance from our local health department. And there's an upcoming meeting in Delaware County to discuss this guidance. Once it's published, we'll utilize that guidance in our schools as well. You might ask, who is the health authority that we answer to? I'm assuming I will get that answer when we have a meeting with the health department in the next two weeks. But also I would make an educated guess that because we now have a local health department, that we would answer to our local health department. The reason we abide by the PDE and PA Department of Health guidance was we did not have a local health department. So other districts that had a local health department, they were told to, you know, refer to the local health authority. We did not have that option, so we had to contact the PA Department of Health. Okay. This is the bulk of the plan that we've been going over as it's been updated. So Section 3 is divided into multiple sections and I'm going to go through those sections. The first section is masking. There's currently no mask mandate. So we will continue to support students who choose to wear masks and will continue to supply masks in our buildings. But there is no mask mandate in our buildings and there's no mandate from any health authority at this time. We obviously will implement any mandate that comes from a health authority. The next section refers to physical distancing. Unless mandated, physical distancing will not be in place for the 2223 school year. If you would like, we can add the caveat of unless mandated to the section prior to the vote this week just so that it's very clear that we don't plan to have physical distancing, but if it's mandated, we would have to. We're going to move on to hand washing. And obviously, we're going to continue to encourage everyone to wash their hands as that's always a good practice. And then the next section outlines cleaning procedures. We continue to utilize EPA-approved cleaning supplies. We additionally clean an area when we are notified of a positive COVID case being present in that area. But realistically, we are always cleaning with these EPA-approved cleaning supplies. We may consider leaving the, just the first sentence in this section because I do think it covers us because we're always cleaning all areas of our buildings. The next section is labeled contact tracing, isolation and quarantine. The district will contact trace when mandated by a health authority. In addition, we will provide a list of close contacts to the health authority if we are mandated. Towards the end of the school year, I can't remember at what time it changed, but we were no longer to report close contacts to the health department. We continue to ask anyone that has positive COVID-19, that they stay home and they contact the appropriate district personnel as soon as possible. This allows us to set up plans for those who will be out for an extended period of time. So we do want that information as soon as we can have it so that we can get a sub in place if in the case of a staff member. A change we might want to consider through the language here is that it right now reflects that parents should report to the school principal, but realistically, we're reporting to the school nurse. So if you would like, I can make that change prior to the next board meeting. And our nurses will continue to provide families with information regarding the most recent recommendations for quarantine and isolation. I did not include what is the current isolation and quarantine criteria on the CDC website because, as I said, as we get started, that is subject to change. So I'd just rather reference that we will always communicate the most recent recommendations so families are aware. And that's what our nurses have been doing. And the district's going to discontinue the use of the district dashboard on our website. And this is consistent with the direction we believe other districts are going with in the county. The next section refers to diagnostic and screening testing. And many of you are aware that we were fortunate enough to have access to a COVID-19 test through CHOP's Project ASIT. We continue to have a good supply of COVID-19 tests through that program. So as long as we are continuing to receive that supply, we will continue to offer that testing of symptomatic staff and students, obviously with consent, if they become symptomatic in our buildings. The next section labeled efforts to provide vaccinations to school communities remains the same as in last year. We did have vaccine clinics when the vaccine wasn't easily accessible. And we continue to have the vaccine.gov information on our website. Obviously, now it's very accessible to make an appointment at your local pharmacy. The next few sections, there's not change in the language. We're going to continue to provide accommodations for students who need them and we're continuing to work with our local and state health authorities. I realize that is not at all easy to read. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to take them.
So just to be clear, if a student has COVID, they wouldn't automatically, they're used to the policy in the past, zoom in to live instruction? That would have to be, that could happen, but that's not.
Yeah, it's not always developmentally appropriate for children to do that. It's also at the high school, I'm just thinking of the high school right now too, is that they have Canvas. So a lot of the stuff's easily accessible to them. They wouldn't have to zoom in. And also, we just want to consider that if you're home with COVID, you might not want to do that.
And would the same recommendations go for just someone who is quarantining because they were a close contact, not that?
Yes. So the same, you know, we would have this coordination to make sure that the child's getting what they need.
Any other comments? I did see on the Pennsylvania Department of Health today, they have a new website and it talked about weekly reporting of COVID numbers to the state. I was just curious, like, was that a continuation of what happened last year? And you mentioned about not having the dashboard, like, if that number is being collected and reported to the state, might we want to have it be available for the district?
So that number is reported to the state by the nurse in each building. It is reported based on information, you know, we have access to. So it's if somebody reports to us that they have COVID-19. It was put on pause by the health department towards the end of the school year, but they did just issue that they're going to ask us to do that again. I don't know that that, having it on the website really, it's just not the direction that most districts are going in because I think it's just that it's kind of prevalent. And when it's prevalent in the community, it's prevalent every, you know, it's just a more common, I mean, we're a few years into it, so that's now, you know, more common to deal with. Which is again, why I think the cleaning, we're always doing that cleaning. So we don't know if someone had COVID the day before and so we're always cleaning anyhow. Yes.
Yeah, I think one of the takeaways from this plan for this year is that we are moving, like you said, most of the state, most of the districts in the state to a realm in which we're treating this like other infectious communicable diseases. And we have protocols and policies that have long been in place for our schools to identify cases or if they become aware of cases that fall under those rules and regulations that they get reported. We get guidance from the Department of Health. And so COVID is now in that suite of illnesses that the district has always kind of had to deal with in different ways. And I think you're right, like, just the prevalence of it, it is out and around. We'll still, you know, all the members of the community have the ability to look to the CDC and the community transmission levels, community risk levels for COVID. And they have guidance. They are about making decisions that are best for each person's health and socialization and masking and other protocols. But yeah, for the district, it's now trying to move it into a more routine kind of illness than the disruptions that it has caused in the past.
And our nurses will continue to reach out with the health department when they have questions or anything, you know, out of the ordinary comes up. They've been doing that with other diseases for as long as they've been here. So it's now, that's no different for them. So they're used to doing that. Now with the Delaware County Health Department, I'm guessing we'll probably be reaching out to them in place of the PADOH as we were last year.
For the, last year it was a little bit confusing, I think, at times because it was like, if you're vaccinated, then this is what you do. And if you're not vaccinated, this is what you do. And then it was like, if you're vaccinated but not boosted, this is, it got very confusing. Is there, is there any clarification on that? Like, is it just, here is what you do now, no matter?
The CDC website has a calculation, like, you answer questions, you calculate your isolation. That's been what we've shared. It's been on our website. It's still, you know, not the most easy to follow, you know, it's still the if this, then that type of situation. I'm not sure. We'll see what the Delaware County Health Department puts out if there's anything different about that. But that's still on the CDC website, which is what we would share. Like, please review these guidance, you know, and see where you fit into this grid.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just thinking about like communications out to parents and families as the school year is starting, like, what they might need to think about in terms of if you're a close contact versus if you actually are testing positive or if you're symptomatic or that sort of thing. It's not exactly this because that's not.
Yeah, and I'd be hesitant as a school district to like put our own graphic or something together like that because it is the CDC recommendations that are right on their website and that's what should be followed. And so we may have, you know, guidance from the health department. Then those go on our website and that's what's followed. But that, I wouldn't recommend that we create a different document. Yeah.
And Nicole, just to clarify, I believe masking on school buses is no longer mandated?
That is not mandated. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing all this. Has, do you know why the state hasn't updated the template though? I just find that kind of.
It's a great question, Kristin. No, I do not have the answer for that.
And just kind of a public service announcement, again, the, kind of the responsibility that we all have to be able to keep our kids and staff safely in school is to follow the best practices with monitoring symptoms, be aware of close contacts, testing and then staying home when you're sick and following the isolation and quarantine protocols. I think it's helpful, any chance that we get to reiterate that and know that that's a common responsibility to care for each other and just to be able to keep our schools safely open.
Are there any other questions?
So this comes back to the board for approval at the August 18th meeting.
Correct. Yes.
Yes.
And we may expect to see some changes based on whatever new guidance comes out in the next day.
And that's, whatever new guidance comes out, we did keep this to adapt to new guidance so that it wouldn't have to be changed every time something changes. We're just going to follow the recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from your side?
That's all I have. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comment for items pertaining to tonight's agenda. And we had nobody submit to comment. So we'll move on to board committee reports. There is also not a board committee that met in the last, since the last board meeting. I'll just note that we, now that we're into August, the schedule is picking up again with our regular committee cycles. And so next Thursday is a finance and facility committee meeting. We'll look forward to that report at the next board meeting. So item six on the agenda is for finance and facilities. Item A is the bill list. I will welcome a motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed.
King moved.
Crisp in second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill list approved. Item B is for change orders. I will accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owners representative CB Development Services, Inc. and authorize the change orders totaling $116,847.77 as listed. I heard Larson moved.
Short second.
Short second. Any discussion? I just did want to know, we had reached out to KC, or to CB Development Services, who I see in the audience, if there's any questions from the board. But these change orders do fit within the contingency and the remaining funds for the project. So we are in, continue to be in good shape with that budget for both of the projects or the three projects that are listed here. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Change orders are approved. In item seven of the agenda, under human resources, item A is resignation. I'll accept the following resignations as listed.
Okay, moved.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is non-acceptance of appointment. I will accept a motion to approve the following non-acceptance of an appointment.
B. B's appointments.
B, I have B non-acceptance.
I have B non-acceptance as well.
Appointments.
B appointment.
Yeah. It's appointments. C is non-acceptance.
All right. I don't know why mine printed out differently. Okay, we'll do it then. We'll call it B appointments. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Feinberg moved.
Crisp in second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
I have a comment. It's just exciting to see all of the new hires that are joining our staff and district here. It's exciting to get ready for the upcoming school year and just also encouraging to those gaps are being built to ensure that our students continue to be the best that they can be.
Thank you. Any other comments? I had asked, I don't know if you're able to talk about it, just where we are in terms of hiring at this point, you know, a month or so before school starts and if there are any key areas. I know last year we were doing some public service announcements of slots that we'd like to fill and if there's any we'd want to promote here.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. And Dr. Ramundos, you'll give me the eye if I report anything not quite correctly. Right now, we're in very good shape as far as professional staff go. We do still have, I believe it's maybe five acceptances that we're looking for. We feel like we're in good shape to start the year when it comes to the professionals. We are equipped with our bus drivers as well as our food service staff. However, we're always looking for more. So if you are interested in food service staff or bus driving opportunities, whether or not you are licensed, we can help you get your license as a bus driver. Please consider passing that along to a friend if you know somebody who might be interested. We would always welcome those applications as well.
Great. And thank you for all the work it has taken to attract and to scan and to interview and then to make the recommendations for these hires. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointments are approved. So now I'll call it C, the non-acceptance of appointment. I will accept a motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
Vatali moved. Crisp in second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I'm going to, item D is for a leave of absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave requests.
Swartz moved.
Feinberg second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is to approve negotiated agreement professional. I will welcome a motion to approve a three-year contract negotiated between the School District of Haverford Township and the Haverford Township Education Association, PSEA/NEA, and authorize administration and special labor council to incorporate the terms into a collective bargaining agreement effective September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2025, and authorize proper officers of the board to execute said agreement subject to legal review.
Feinberg moved.
Larson second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
It's exciting news. I know there was a lot of hard work that went into both sides of this to come to the agreement and to negotiate this. And as a union member myself, it's exciting when that collective bargaining agreement, you know, passes the board and then I believe it goes to their membership for a vote, or did it go first and then come to us?
The members did already vote. The, the members did already vote, uh, yeah.
This is the fine, we're sealing the deal here.
Yeah.
Got to find it.
Right.
So I appreciate the team of, both from the HTA and on the district side who negotiated. Um, I know that is a lot of work, and, um, I, the reports to us were that it was done in a real good collaborative spirit and was a productive conversation that got us to this point. So thanks to everybody who was involved. Any other comments or discussion? I guess one other point that I could make is that the, um, the salary increase that was approved, or is part of this contract, was, um, considered as part of our budget. It's something that we can accommodate, and, um, the teachers' salaries is approximately 50% of our budget. Is that about right?
The salaries by themselves are about 32% of the budget.
Okay, and then all the all-in staff costs?
The benefits in, it's approximately 50%.
So this is a considerable investment. You, our people are the district, and, um, we are in a good financial position to handle this, and like I said, that the contract was done, and, um, done so well is, is a testament to all the hard work that went into it, and it's good to be at this point. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item F is the administrative position authorization. I will welcome a motion to approve a motion authorizing the following administrative position to be included in Act 80, Act 93, Administrators Association, or HASA. The position is a Director of Safety and Security.
Short's moved.
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Could we discuss a little bit, um, you know, what this role entails and why we're looking to bring this, this role on?
Sure. Uh, having, uh, folks in charge of certain safety and security aspects has been, uh, part of our requirements as a school district, I believe since 2017. Um, i- since then, we have had several responsibilities split up between some assistant principals, some folks in, in pupil services, uh, various people in facilities, et cetera. Uh, as the demands grow and the district grows, the demands on those folks in all of their work, um, grow as well as the safety and security needs. I think, you know, we are all aware of, of the, the need to really make sure that our efforts are focused, and by having this position, we will be able to have someone who can oversee all of those aspects, um, rather than, you know, asking folks to continue to do that in addition to increased duties that they have in other areas. Uh, so we are, are eager to fill such a position and, uh, are looking forward to having that type of coordination in the district.
Thank you. And is this a position that the funding for has helped with the additional basic education funding that we received?
Yes. Uh, the basic education funding is something that we can use to cover, uh, this, and it is, that's funding that will recur, so we don't have to worry about where will we find the money next year. Uh, this is a position that can be funded, uh, throughout, through that basic education funding.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The position is approved. Under, uh, Agenda Area Eight for Pupil Services, item A is out-of-district educational contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placement for the 2022-23 school year.
Crispin move. Okay, second.
Short second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Placements are approved. Item B is educational service agreements. I will accept a motion for the Board of School Directors to approve the educational services agreements for district students with special needs. The agreements cover reimbursement for educational services for the school years as listed.
Larson moved. King second.
Moved in a battle for second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is educational services contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service contract for services provided to students with the district.
Crispin move. Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Can we just talk a little bit, and I think it's helpful for the public as well, um, how this is consistent with our district's goals?
Is that something that you can-
Sure, the educational service contract.
Yes, with, it's with Learn Well Services for hospitalized students.
Sure, absolutely. Um, this is actually something that is, uh, required for us to provide, um, educational services for students who are gonna be in hospitals longer term. Typically, it's about six weeks or more. Uh, what happens is Learn Well actually, um, finds students who are hospitalized, uh, finds their addresses, comes to us and says, we are gonna provide this service to those students for this period of time in this way. And, um, we find it, it's, you know, certainly helping to address students who have really longer-term needs and making sure they don't fall too far behind, but doing so in a way that's reasonable and works with what their needs are while they are hospitalized.
So it's definitely a way to meet the students essentially where they are, to continue with their educational goals.
Absolutely, and trying to, trying to keep some sort of normal environment for students where they can continue to learn, then, then we have a service that can help them do that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under Area Nine, Curriculum and Instruction, item A is Dignity Consulting LLC Proposal. I will accept a motion to approve the professional services proposal with Dignity Consulting LLC to develop a shared commitment to a climate of belonging and a culture of dignity in the district.
Larson moved. Crispin second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I actually had a couple of things on this. Um, looking at the, what the in-service entailed, I was just wondering, did any, does anyone ever ask the teachers what they would like to be in-service on? Not the administration, but the teachers. Is that-
Yeah, we, we do that annually. We do a, um, it's called a PD Needs Assessment as well as a feedback survey. So teachers provide feedback on the prior year, and then they also indicate what their, what they believe their needs might be, or what they might be interested in for professional development. Um, this area of, um, culture, belonging, all of those things does come up as something that teachers are interested in doing, uh, particularly this year, uh, as it pertains to mental and emotional well-being for students as well, um, because they, they notice that students are still adjusting to being back in the classroom and are looking for ways to support all students as they return to a regular classroom experience.
I guess I was just, when I was looking at the numbers, it did seem a little high to me, and it was explained that the author of the book would be speaking, so, and I get that when you have a representative on someone's behalf, that lowers the cost versus the author, but when I was, I don't know how long they're speaking, it just seemed high. And, you know, I haven't finished the book that you've given me yet, so maybe that'll change when I'm done. But I guess what I struggle with is, you know, that we're gonna be giving this amount of money for this in-service to talk about equity, but we don't have enough books in some of our classrooms. And I can speak from this from my personal experience. I have Amazoned paperback books for my middle schoolers, um, because there's not enough copies to go home, and that, to me, that's an equity issue, because not everyone, you know, I was annoyed to do it, um, but I can do it, and I did do it, and friends have done it, and now that, some people can't do that, and that, or maybe they don't even know about it. I mean, and paperback books, um, I mean, I've done it because some, there's not enough copies to go home. I've done it for one of my sons because copies of the book were scanned, so you had to read them on a Chromebook, and he said, you know, "It really hurts my eyes to read these photocopies of the novel we're reading, um, because there's not a copy to go home." And, you know, I'm like, "No, I don't want you to do that to your eyes. I'll Amazon it. It'll be here tomorrow." I've had friends who've ordered honors chemistry textbooks. There's not enough to go home, when one friend's son was struggling. So this isn't just, you know, it's my personal experience and experience of friends, and that's what I kind of have a trouble getting past, you know, spending all this for someone to talk about equity when I don't think for necess-, like, we could be doing more with that money to help with actual equity. And that's just my, um, and also, I, you know, I'm glad you, I did wanna know what the teachers were thinking, and if this is one of their needs, and that's important to me, um, to me. Do, do we ever get like a printout of what the teachers, like you're saying you get it? Is that something the board could look at?
Sure, we can, we can report out on that, yep.
Okay, that's just my little issue.
And, and can, if I could just, um, just share, we would certainly be eager to know of circumstances where students do not have a copy of the paperback and that's needed. Uh, there are times when we have ordered class sets of things, uh, based on knowing how many kids are enrolled at a time, and maybe they don't all need them at the same time. Um, but we certainly would wanna know if there is an instance where folks do not have access to a book. We can look into getting additional copies a- and, and work through that. So certainly, I encourage anyone who finds themselves in that situation to go ahead and-
Yeah, because, like I said, I've done it numerous times.
Sure.
This isn't just this one time I had to Amazon. It's not a situation like this. It is, um, not at the elementary level, to be clear. This is more a middle school, high school issue.
Okay, and, and again, I'll just encourage folks, if you find yourselves in that situation, to reach out to your child's teacher, find out if there are additional copies, uh, what's happening there, and, and/or the child's principal. Uh, and then that will always make it up to us, and we can, we can take a look at it from there. So thank you. Yeah, thanks for making us aware of that.
If I can just make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
You know, earlier in the meeting, Dr. Crispin and I started off with the mission statement and the district goals, and we do this every school board meeting. Um, and one of the things that our district is passionate about is this sense of belonging for students, and what does it really mean to, um, have diversity in our classrooms, provide equitable opportunities, and have inclusive spaces. And as I sit here, um, on this board, as the only person of color, I can tell you that there is no price tag to put on a sense of belonging and culture and dignity, and there is no price tag to what that feels like for the child that may not feel as if they don't belong. Um, and certainly, I recognize the need for school supplies and, and books, but if someone is uncomfortable, they can't learn, and if just one child is uncomfortable and they can't learn, then we are doing a disservice. And so I'm excited for this proposal. I'm excited for what it can offer. I'm excited that our teachers want this experience. I'm excited that our board welcomes it, and that we have the resources to be able to move forward and truly live up to the mission and goals that we have set forth. So thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B is a student educational excursion. I will welcome a motion to approve the middle school seventh and eighth grade band and strings, Seventh Heaven, sixth-grade chamber choir, Fordets Choir, Fortissimo Choir, uh, tot- totaling approximately 275 students to attend Hershey Park in Hershey, Pennsylvania for performances on May 19th, 2023. I love that they're planning so far.
Crispin move.
Short second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item of the agenda, um, where we have a topic is item 12, public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. The board values public comment as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before the board. It is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. It is not a question and answer, period. While we conduct our business in open public meetings according to the Sunshine Act, it is not a meeting with the public. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This time is for items, um, of other school-related topics not on the agenda. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. In order to give everyone equal opportunity to speak, and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have any materials to distribute to the board, please leave them at the end of the table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes. We had five people sign up for public comments, and the first one is Ms. Elena Wisely. Don't see that she's in the room. Uh, the second name is Helene Conroy Smith.
Good evening. My name's Helene Conroy Smith, and I do live here in Haverford. I just want to say, on May 27th, 2022, I requested meeting minutes of an ad hoc equity committee. I asked for meeting notes and details. The school board, um, was asked to pay for an equity audit on March 24th, 2022 by Cameron Bush. So that's part of the ad hoc committee. Um, specific info, detailed information was not publicly provided, and I requested emails because they said there was no such meetings, and lo and behold, there were meetings. So Cameron Bush is a teacher. She presented a Google form to school district employees, including Jabori Whitehead, Elizabeth Mastercola, Rebecca Smith from DCIU, and Sarah Christensen, former S. School District employee and now DCIU employee. So there was a meeting. On February 16th at 3:00 p.m., that meeting occurred. I'd like to know, where are the notes? Where are the financial figures? Where are the Google form with that information? The small presentation at the public committee meeting did not include details. On December 2nd, Leon Smith, Sarah Christensen, both for the district, and Diana Menez from University of Penn's DCIU had a meeting. Where are those notes? Where, where is that report? Where are those financial figures? So, where are we proposing to have this equity meeting? What work is going to be done? Because we've been doing equity for so long. Where's the end to that? So you're asking us, the stakeholders, to continually contribute to a large fee that's really not assisting our students in math, reading, or writing. So why do we, the public, I'm asking, need to write to know this information? Why are we paying, paying attorney fees to review what can, information can be provided to the taxpayers? That information belongs to us as taxpayers. Any ad hoc committee, including committees that are professional employees, that create a financial request onto stakeholders using our public funds, right, to make decisions, and then to advise school board members for you all to make a decision to create a new expenditure should be public. It is public right to know. As the public, we should be invited to these meetings. We should be seeing with these news hours. We should have details that we can go in and to look at it. There was an equity group consisted of parents, school staff, school district staff, and the school board members. Yet, where are those, where's that information? Okay? Public stakeholders have the right to have input, and this is, again, you're not giving the public the input. When you talk about transparency, that's absolutely not true. I have some questions. I have lots of questions. We have a responsive classroom payment for $859. Does that come under Title II? Is that the A part, where the teacher and principal trainings and recruitment's being done? Because we're already paying for that through DCI, I'm sorry, not through DCIU, through the DVC-EE. We're already paying for that through them, and then we have this other membership. So, okay, is it that, or is it Part B, where we're giving math and science partnership programs to the kids? And I really do hope it's math and science, because that's where that money should be going. And we now are hiring a safety and security director. That job is fairly new. I know that it's been, you know, in the realm for, since 2017, but why hasn't this been discussed publicly? Why didn't you acknowledge that this was gonna happen to the public prior to giving the budget? So we're budgeting and asking for all these things, and I sent an email today, because last year, we were $3.1 million in a surplus. Where did, would that money come from? Public has a right to know, and we're gonna start asking questions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean Lutz.
Hi, I'm Jean Lutz. I live at 169 Clemson Road. I have two kids in the district, one in sixth grade and one entering eighth grade this September. I want to take a minute first just to thank you all, the staff and the board, for your service, your dedication, your patience, and your steadiness. This divisive time has been incredibly challenging, I know, for our educators, and for all the people who support our educators. Everything comes to your door. You're expected to protect our children from the pandemic, to protect our children from gun violence, to protect our children from our nation's history of racial segregation and racial violence. We could go on. All these things are incredibly important. I want to thank you for showing up, for making difficult decisions, and for listening. Sometimes I think listening is the absolutely hardest thing to do. So now that I've thanked you, I'm gonna lay another problem at your door. Now that I've thanked you, I'm going to lay another problem at your door. I want to ask you to move forward on solar panels for the Linwood Elementary School. With respect, I think it's taking you too long to figure out the right path forward. Despite all the goodwill and hard work in the district, I've been disappointed by the lack of urgency in our actions to mitigate climate change. I'd love to see us not only create an administrative position for safety and security, but to create a director for sustainability for the district. That's something to think about for the future. Worldwide scientific consensus tells us that human-caused climate change is real, and that we have a very short window of time to reduce our carbon emissions and to avoid catastrophic outcomes that will upend life as we know it. It's critical that we act as soon as we can, yesterday, now, immediately, to reduce our carbon footprint, and specifically now, I'm talking about the carbon footprint of the district. Solar panels on Linwood would be a great step, one of the steps that we should be taking. I noticed in my meetings that I've been in, in the last few years, that taking bold action against climate change never feels urgent when we are worried about our children's physical safety and mental health. But we can't wait until things calm down, because the climate isn't calming down. We have floods in Kentucky, wildfires in California, unprecedented heat wave in Britain, the highest temperatures on record for several months in India. The fact is, climate change itself now is threatening our children's physical safety and mental health. Climate anxiety is now a recognized disorder, and pediatricians and public health experts around the globe are telling us that our children are at risk for health problems because of excessive heat. The truly terrible effects, almost done, caused by climate change aren't happening in Haverford Township. The worst consequences are being felt outside our district, not within it. But we are all connected, and if we don't do something about this, we are educating our children for a future that we are actively making worse.
Thank you for your comments.
We can do better, we have to. Moving forward with the solar panels would be a great step.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stacy Tomaszczuk.
Hi, my name is Stacy Tomaszczuk. I live on Arlington Road in the district. My kids are at Chatham Park, entering second and fifth grade. We're very excited. I started paying attention to the board meetings last summer. If we all remember, it was very angry and loud, and it was about basis. And I remember looking it up, and when I researched it, I was like, this is amazing. I am very excited about this. And I started getting involved and I'm learning more and having more conversations, and then I ended up having, creating a, organizing with a friend, a community group, to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion, and for our students to have a sense of belonging. And I came here today to say thank you for creating that space, and to just inform you of how many people are in support in this community, even though a lot of the voices are quiet publicly, the people who support this. We're incredibly loud in numbers. When I started just randomly seeing who was interested in this, I mean, I was stunned by the stampede of people. We were so, it was incredible. We ended up having, creating a group, we have a BOGO, we're called Chatham Families Together, look us up. We had two events that were incredibly received in the entire community, regardless of what people's political opinions are, like, this type of work, this type of strive for equity, and putting people who do, might not feel represented in their community, putting them on a platform, like, maybe higher than my kids, because they don't have that opportunity. And then, so we have a lot of things in plan. So we had a culture share event, and then we also had a celebration in the park to celebrate Juneteenth, LGBTQ pride, and summer. And it was, again, an incredible event. It was raining, and we had over 100 people show up. We had a table celebrating Juneteenth with artifacts from slavery, irons that actually slaves used, and other things. It was wonderful. We had paint rockets. And what was funny was because there were rumors of concerns, because when you hear pride, people get concerned about indoctrination, and that's what. And we laughed about it, because we're like, did you see the flyer? And the things we did to celebrate pride were, we had rainbow Rice Krispies, and I brought props. Another thing we did was what love means to me, and everybody who showed up put what means to them on a Post-it, and things were like comforting hugs, or my family, a flowery gift, Minecraft, honesty, kindness, acceptance. It was just, and I brought that, and I'll put it on a chair, if you guys want to look at it. But I just wanted to thank you guys for the space to do this, and for supporting these types of policies, and including fair funding, and good luck with Back to School, and everybody have a great year. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Elizabeth Flynn?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Flynn. I live on Eagle Road, just, just down the road from here in Havertown. Excuse me, and just have a brief comment. Wanted to thank the Board for recent action, I think it was at the last meeting on the 14th of July, in support of the PA School Board Association proposal to kind of share resources that address the mental and emotional health of students going forward. I just happen to be reading and hearing a great deal about that in the past year, as I imagine, you know, many other folks have as well, and there's so much evidence that kids are, you know, struggling just in much greater, excuse me, greater numbers than, than usual. I've seen, you know, reports from hospitals, emergency rooms, everywhere from CHOP to other hospitals around the country, that they're just kind of being overwhelmed with kids presenting younger than before and with kind of more severe needs. And obviously, that, that does not apply to every student, but I think just recognizing that there are issues for, for many kids and trying to be a little more preventive in, in approach, and showing that, you know, as a community, as a district, that their mental and emotional health is important, and, you know, trying to help them be healthy, resilient, strong, so they can focus on being students and being kids, is really important. So as a parent and a community member, I'm just grateful to see that commitment, so thank you.
I'll circle back. I don't see that she is joining us, but Elena Wisely? Not here tonight, okay. The next item on the agenda is Board Reports. I'll start with Mr. Schwartz.
Just say enjoy the remainder of summer, that much of it left, but no report.
I will echo that, enjoy the rest of summer, and I hope that all of our teachers and staff are getting as much rest as they possibly can. I know there's probably never enough, but continue to have a safe and happy summer.
I feel like the summer has gone insanely fast, right? Like, every person I talked to is like, feels faster than normal. I need an extra month. Have a good rest of the summer. No report. No report.
So last night, DCIU had their first, their August board meeting, which was the first board meeting of the '22, '23 school year, so it was good to be back together, you know, getting back into the work. We did take July off, which was, you know, a nice little break. I'm also honored to have been named the Chair of the Education Committee for DCIU on their board, so I'm looking forward to that work and collaborating with my colleagues there. Also, a plug, I know we have a lot of job openings here, but if your specialty is early childhood, if you're a paraprofessional, you have a special ed background, Head Start background, DCIU is hiring. There will be a job fair on August 8th from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at the Marple Education Center, and some of the positions they are looking for, special educators, early childhood teachers, paraprofessionals, Head Start instructors, and Head Start instructional assistants. And these positions are full-time, or the full-time positions are eligible for health insurance, PISs, retirement benefits, paid time off, and tuition reimbursement, and there's also a hiring bonus of up to $2,500 available. So if you've perused Haverford listings and nothing appealed to you or fit your, your background, please look at DCIU. Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to clarify some remarks I made at the last school board meeting. So during my last board report, I spoke about the disappointment of numerous elementary school families, mine included, over the direction that Field Day had taken, and that how, given the district's emphasis on social, emotional wellness, I thought that, and others families thought, that eliminating beloved elementary school traditions that promote connectivity between students and with their schools was misguided. So after my remarks, there was a lot of misinformation online, and a lot of outright lies. I know people have axes to grind, but I feel really strongly that I just want to clarify a couple of things. Number one, I did not then, nor would I ever criticize our phenomenal teachers or our incredible PTOs, and the Board is not involved with Field Day at all, so I don't know why some people would have thought that. But I am happy to list out every amazing teacher my sons have had at Linwood and at the middle school. I couldn't even pick a favorite, because we've been blessed with so many, teachers have gone above and beyond. Likewise, as the former head of the Linwood PTO, I know more than anyone the amount of effort and hours that our PTO volunteers put in just for the benefit of our students. I frequently speak about all the work they do during my board reports, and I even during my last board report commended them for being one of the only really avenues left to provide, like, fun, memorable activities for our elementary school students. So to be clear, I, I was criticizing not the teachers, not the PTOs, but I'm sorry to say, our, our district and our administration. And that's not to say that I don't think our school district is great, I, I do, but there's always room for improvement, and there are things that need to be improved. It's very similar to loving the house you live in but wanting to remodel the bathroom. It's the same concept, it's not difficult to understand. I just want to be crystal clear, Field Day is not a PTO activity. It is a district activity. PTO events do not happen during school days, taking away from instructional time. That's not to say that PTO members don't come into school during school hours to help with school events, or they don't help out at district events. A great example is district and elementary art shows. PTO volunteers hang art for the art department, they display artwork, it's still a district event. Same thing, some schools, more than others, rely on PTO volunteers for Field Day. At Linwood, we used a lot of high school students who needed volunteer hours. We did have some PTO volunteers, I think at Chestnut Wald, it was always PTO volunteers who supported our schools. But Field Day is a district event that the PTOs support, it's not the reverse. You know, I consider it a privilege to help families who come to me with questions or concerns, or just want to be heard, I'm always happy to point them in the right, the right direction. And when an issue comes to me that affects a large portion of our district population, as Field Day does, I'm happy to advocate on their behalf, because that's what I would like to do with my time, student welfare, and is of the utmost importance to me, and being able to speak for parents who maybe can't get to the PTO meetings, or a little intimidated to come and speak at a board meeting about something that they don't think is, that they just don't feel comfortable speaking about. To be clear, though, because this came up a lot, and I want, I shouldn't say angry me, it very much upset me that people had a problem with this, but if Republicans clap for me, I, I don't care. If Democrats clap for me, I, I don't care. If no one claps for me, I don't care. My, my job here is for our schools and our students, I'm not, I'm not about politics. If you don't like something that I say, please email me. I am the most open-minded, middle-of-the-road person, I will listen to what you say, but just baseless attacks, that's just not appropriate, and it shouldn't be tolerated. But I'm always happy to listen to concerns about stuff that I actually said, or questions if you need clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Feinberg?
Everybody have a great rest of summer. No report.
No report, yeah, it's, it's been nice that, as board members, we've had a little bit of a reprieve with lightening the committee schedule, and some of the other liaison roles that we have have taken a break this summer. I live quite near Chestnut Wald and see that there's a flurry of activity outside and comings and goings inside, so you can tell the calendar has turned, and it is August, and it's, it's getting more real. So, yeah, just encourage everyone to enjoy the last weeks of summer and get ready for school, check those, you know, the books that the kids were supposed to read, the math packets they were supposed to do, I know, that's always a Labor Day scramble at my house. So just a little advice, try to get that done in a less stressful manner, but enjoy the rest of the summer. And with that, I will announce our board met in an information session prior to this meeting to receive information related to the procedure for solar power and the safety and security information, and that we met in executive session to discuss confidential student matters, confidential student litigation matters, and confidential tax assessment appeal litigation. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on August 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the boardroom here of the Oakmont Administrative, Administration Building, and I will now welcome a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Kristin second.
Good night, thank you.